To start.
All right.
Brush your hair, comb your teeth, brush your teeth. So I'd like to welcome everyone to Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, May the 12th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Uh, can we call to order, call me to order and do the pleasurable reasons, please? Mr. Harrington? Oh, there it is.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. So let's do a roll call, please, as Gabe Allison's here tonight.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
I know, I saw her, there we go. Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. So next, we have a, we have a series of proclamations and using Maryland's excellent advice, we're going to spread the wealth. And so I'm going to read Police Week, public works will be read by Counselor Novak. I'll read notes, uh, excuse me, right, Counselor Kupczynski's reading military appreciation. And I will be writing, reading motorcycle safety awareness month. So I'll start off. Police Week, May 9th through May 15th, 2021, whereas the Congress of the United States of America has delegated the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021 to be dedicated as National Police Week. And May 15th of each year, we have police, police Memorial Day in honor of federal state and municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas it is known that on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 55 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1786, more than 21,000 US law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas law enforcement officers, including the city of Albany police officers, are, are our guardians of life and property and defenders of the individual rights and freedoms. And whereas the city of Albany is proud of our law enforcement officers and wish to recognize their commitment to public safety, the public safety profession. And whereas the police department and officers provide the highest quality services and are committed to the highest professional standards, working in partnership with our community to meet the challenge of reducing crime, creating a safe environment and improving our quality of life. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do want to hereby proclaim May 9th through, May 9th through May 15th, 2021 as Police Week. In Albany, Oregon, to call attention to Albany police officers for their outstanding service they provide to our community. I also call upon our residents and businesses to express thanks to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and, and family in safety each day and return to our homes, knowing they are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones' property in our government, all against, against all who would violate the law. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Albany to be affixed on the 12th day of May, May 2021, Alexander D. Johnson, the second mayor.
All right, this is the Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of critical importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of our community. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are employees at all levels of government and the private sector, responsible for rebuilding, improving, operating and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in our community to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works programs and services in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th, 2021 as Public Works Week in Albany. And I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works services and to recognize the contributions that public works employees make every day to our health, safety, economic vitality and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 12th day of May, 2021, Alexander D. Johnson, the second mayor.
Military Appreciation, Military Appreciation Month, May 2021. Whereas in 1999, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling for all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in the defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of the United States Armed Forces who have served and are now serving our country. And whereas in addition to the federal government and all state governments, local jurisdictions have the responsibility and privilege to raise awareness and of, and respect for this aspect of the heritage of the United States and to encourage the residents of every community to dedicate themselves to the values and principles for which Americans have served throughout the history of our nation. And whereas the sense of well-being, freedom and love of country that citizens of the United States enjoy today are the result of personal sacrifice, lives changed or lost, and ongoing vigilance given by members of our armed forces, both during and after one's service and by the family members who support them. And whereas through their commitments and commitment to freedom, America's veterans and current members of our armed forces have made the world more secure and have demonstrated that freedom, freedmen should be cherished and appreciated by all. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson, the second mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Military Appreciation Month in Albany, Oregon. And I encourage all residents to recognize the valor of our resident, of our veterans and the sacrifices made by our military personnel and their families through personal thanks and words of gratitude to those we know who have served or are currently serving. In witness whereof, I have here, hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 12th day of May, 2021, Alexander D. Johnson, the second mayor.
Proclamation Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Whereas, May 2021, whereas Oregon is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety education, and whereas motorcycles in Oregon recognize the importance, motorcycles recognize the importance of riders to be properly trained in the safe operation of their motorcycle. And whereas it is important that citizens of our state should be aware of motorcycles on the highways and recognize the importance of sharing the roadway with these fuel-efficient vehicles. And whereas the designation of Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month promotes public awareness of energy-efficient motorcycles and its proper safe use in the roads and highways of Oregon. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson, the second mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Albany, Oregon. And I encourage all residents to join in this observance. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of Albany, City of Albany, to be affixed on the 12th day of May, 2021, Alexander D. Johnson, Mayor. Now, what I'd like to do now is like to have Counselor Smith promote for the Police Week, recognize a family member.
I wanted to recognize my uncle Woodrow Wilson Whetstone, who was an Albany police officer at one time. He was killed in the line of duty as Junction City Chief of Police on December 26th, 1960.
My mother wasn't killed in line of duty, so I'll go ahead and defer to Chief, Chief Harden.
Good evening, Mayor and health source. Thank you for having the honor to talk about our awards tonight. As you mentioned, this is what we commonly call as Police Week. Police officers across the country risk their lives every day in protection of the citizens that they serve. Albany is not immune from that. We are coming up on the 20th anniversary of losing three local guardians in that same protection. But just to give you a little bit of perspective here, in 2021, so far, we've lost 124 officers in the line of duty, two just yesterday in the state of California. During the year of 2020, we lost 362 officers in the line of duty. And in 2019, it was 150. So those numbers are very scary and we're, we're on a, a very negative path for our numbers. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Robert Hayes. He's going to talk about and take a moment to honor some guardians that we lost 20 years ago, this upcoming September 4th. So Robert or Jerry, go ahead, Robert and Jerry, go ahead.
I was having some technical difficulties, so I'd use the captain's computer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Albany Police Department was established 158 years ago. In our 158 years, we have only had one officer killed in line of duty, Officer Jason Harrow. He was a reserve officer for our agency and was hired as a full-time police officer in 2000 and was on my patrol team. At the time of his death, he had been a police officer for only 10 months, was only 29 years old and had a three-month-old daughter. If you're not familiar with the incident, it occurred almost 20 years ago on September 4th, 2001, when senior trooper Maria Miano stopped to assist a disabled motorist that had broken down on the shoulder of Interstate 5 near mile post 243. Earlier in the day, Officer Harrow had asked to do a ride along with his friend and mentor, Sergeant John Burright, with the Oregon State Police. At approximately 7:00 PM, while they were on patrol, they stopped to assist senior trooper Miano. While the three officers were standing on the right side of a van, which was parked on the right shoulder of the interstate, a pickup truck suddenly swerved across northbound lanes of traffic. The pickup truck struck the right rear trooper, Maria Miano's patrol car, traveled along two other vehicles and struck all three officers. It was determined that the driver of the vehicle had fallen asleep. Senior Trooper Miano and Officer Harrow were killed instantly. Sergeant John Burright survived, but was critically injured. Unfortunately, we lost John last week on May 5th here in Albany. Their lives, the lives of Officer Harrow, Sergeant Burright and Senior Trooper Miano will be truly missed. We have a saying in our profession for every fallen police officer, gone but never forgotten. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing me to have a few minutes to address everyone this National Police Week and remembering Jason, John and Maria. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Lieutenant Hayes.
Technical difficulties again. Uh, thank you, Robert, that's very thoughtful, much appreciated. Uh, I wanted to, of course, you all know that I came from the state of Washington. At the end of my awards presentation, I'll bring out two examples of line of duty deaths that have touched me personally and that I worked on those cases. But we'll talk about a positive event here in the first place. So I'm going to share my screen to talk about our, our words and I'll apologize, my voice suddenly wants to get out on me. So, well, we'll be going here.
Yeah, there you are. Okay.
All right, everybody can see that, I hope. All right, so this is our 2020 awards for the council. You normally see these in person. We bring in friends and family, but with COVID restrictions, we're going to be limited in being able to do that this year. We do plan a small, a smaller private ceremony in the upcoming days. First, I want to, I'm sorry, what? Yes.
Chief, you're showing your notes and everything. I recommend you go, go, stop sharing and go to slideshow, start the slideshow and then share it.
Got it.
Sorry about the interruption.
No worries, no worries at all. All right, how's that, better?
There we go.
Oh, okay. All right. So the first employee I want to, to recognize is Detective Ryan Knoll, who is our sworn employee for 2020. Detective Ryan Knoll has been a detective for nearly eight years. His work performance is incredible and at such a high level that lends immediate credibility amongst his peers, supervisors, prosecutors and the courts. Detective Ryan Knoll provides daily support for patrol officer investigations. He has an incredible ability in putting the needs of others and can, together, leads together and connecting evidence and the facts to, facts to support arrests and prosecutions of offenders. Sorry, my voice is giving out of me. He manages his time so efficiently and effectively that he can work his assigned caseload, assist other officers' investigations on a moment's notice and be available for callouts for both the Lynn and Benton County Major Crimes Team. Detective Knoll's customer service community and victims of crimes is noteworthy. From murder victims to victims of petty theft, Detective Knoll provides exceptional service. It goes above and beyond the expectations. Detective Knoll's professional attitude and dedication uphold the overall mission of the Albany Police Department to provide excellence through service. Next is our non-sworn Employee of the Year, which is our Crime Prevention Specialist, Laura Hawkins, has received much praise for her ability to organize our Police Citizens Academy despite COVID-19. We were actually able to pull that off last year. And orchestrate events like Shop with a Cop that brought joy to hundreds of families in our community. Laura handles our department's social media platforms, answers phone calls, organizes programs and helps streamline our resources to best serve our community. The department has received many comments from the public stating that they appreciate our openness, humor and ability to connect with our citizens. Thanks to Laura's excellent post, I will say fairly regularly, I will see comments that I need to give her a raise, so I'll have to work on that one. She works above and beyond her normal duties to make sure our department is displayed well in front of the community. She's dedicated and remains upbeat and positive. Crime Prevention Laura Hawkins, professional attitude and dedication uphold the overall mission of the Albany Police Department, which again is excellence through service. This next case, it's, I'm quite impressed with the awards this year. This was submitted for a life-saving award, but was so over the top, outstanding performance by these three officers that the nominee committee elevated to a Medal of Valor. Lieutenant Alexander, Officer Baker and Officer Hatley are being awarded the Medal of Valor in honor of their great resolve and courageous restraint in avoiding a deadly force incident or the use of deadly force while apprehending an armed and suicidal subject. On November 8th, 2019, Officer Perry Baker was assigned to investigate a sexual luring incident involving a 60-year-old suspect. Fairly rapidly, it became known to the, to Officer Baker, the suspect was living in, in RV directly adjacent to the victim's residence and the suspect may be armed. A tactical plan for approach was developed and contact was made at the suspect's residence. Upon arrival, officers located the suspect in the doorway of his RV with the lights off, lying prone, looking out the door with a small framed revolver in his mouth. Despite initial negotiation with the distraught and suicidal suspect, with him begging for police to shoot him and refusing to drop the firearm, the suspect pulled the trigger of the revolver. However, the weapon did not fire. The suspect was already sobbing and began to crawl backward into his RV. The suspect cried throughout the contact with police that he was sick and he just wanted to die at hands of police rather than face incarceration. Thanks in no small part to tactical leadership and direction of Sergeant Alexander, now Lieutenant Alexander, the suspect was safely taken into custody, thereby ending his ability to continue his suicidal actions. It is my belief that the suspect would have carried out his threat of suicide if it were not for the actions of the officers. This next one is a life-saving award for Sergeant Steve Quarter and Sergeant Buck Pierce. This life-saving award is being presented to Sergeant Pierce and Sergeant Quarter in recognition of their selfless and humane actions in saving the life of a distraught suicidal male attempting to stab himself in the chest. On November 10th, 2019, officers responded to a suicidal subject call. Officer Quarter initially met with the caller, who is the wife of the reported suicidal subject. Initial information gained was that the suspect was highly intoxicated and may have already cut his arm and torso in the, with the intent of harming himself. Officer Quarter found the subject with a knife to his chest with his other hand on the butt of a knife with the intent of driving the knife into his chest. The male appeared to be visibly intoxicated. Officer Quarter negotiated with the male for about six and a half minutes, attempting to get him to put the knife down. However, the male refused. Officer Quarter had previously spoken to Sergeant Pierce and developed a plan to disarm the male through a dual effort of utilizing a 40-millimeter sponge round, which is a less lethal tool that we use, and a taser application, which once the 40-millimeter round was deployed, a taser would incapacitate the subject long enough for officers to take him into custody. When it became apparent that the negotiation was not successful and the subject was still armed with the intent of self-harm, Sergeant Pierce successfully deployed the 40-millimeter sponge round to the subject's hand, which was effective in getting him to drop the knife. Officer Quarter simultaneously deployed a taser cartridge, striking the subject in the chest and body area, immobilizing him momentarily, so all the involved officers could safely take the officer into custody, or the offender in custody, sorry. This next life-saving award is for Officer Curtis Bell and Officer Tim Sousa. On January 3rd, 2021, Officers Bell and Sousa were dispatched to a male who had one leg over the rail on the Pacific Boulevard overpass, a location frequently utilized by apparently suicidal subjects intent on ending their life. Officer Bell was first to arrive as the suspect was standing with one leg over the railing, but returned to the sidewalk side of the railing when he noted the police presence. Officers Bell and Sousa spoke to the subject calmly while having him sit on the ground safely. The subject initially agreed to go to Samaritan Albany General Hospital with officers voluntarily. However, as they walked him to their vehicle, he lunged for a second time at the overpass railing, attempting to jump, forcing officers to intercede a second time to save his life. Sergeant Hayes has said, it is apparent the actions taken by Officer Tim Sousa and Curtis Bell saved the life of this individual. I will note that Officer Tim Sousa is in his last 45 days with Albany Police Department. He is retiring at the end of June. So that concludes our, our awards for 2020. I, I will come back a little bit to National Police Week. We intentionally schedule these events or these awards around Police Week because it's important to not only recognize the sacrifice of our officers out there on behalf of the citizens of the City of Albany, but also recognize their excellent work out there as well. For me personally, these are two officers that have died in the line of duty where I had a direct involvement in those cases versus Hozelina Barber. He was fresh out of the academy and fresh out of training, was killed by a drug impaired driver who blew a red light in his patrol car at 80 miles an hour. And then on the right is, is Deputy Rich Herzog, who attempted to intervene on a erratic, out-of-control mental subject. He was overpowered, his fire was taken and the suspect killed Deputy Herzog in front of a metro bus full of passengers. That subject that killed Deputy Herzog was arrested by me a week before and was released from jail based on space needs. So that, those are very personal cases for myself.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So those are some outstanding awards. We have a lot of nominations, almost on a daily basis. We get, thank you, almost on a daily basis. Let me just stop sharing here. And I really appreciate the council taking the time to recognize the good work of your public servants here, particularly Police Department, a big shout out to our, our fire partners as well. It is a dangerous job and the, the goal every day is to go home, but they do an excellent job every day that they're out there and the citizens of Albany should be very proud.
Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, officers. Race Overing. Next is up on the, thank you very much, Chief, I greatly appreciate it. Next up is Business from the Public. Business from the Public is for these persons wishing to address the City Council of the Council. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless extended by the mayor. Councils, counselors should hold their comments until business from the public, risen from the council. All written material has been forwarded to the counselors and entered in the public record. Instructions for getting copies of the public records is on the city website under Business from the Public. The following persons have submitted items for the record. A person identified as GH regarding street sweeping and Bo Price regarding a Dumbek Water Control District. The following person signed up to speak, Bo Price, Dumbek Water Control District. Mr. Price? Mr. Price, turn the camera on, please, and, and then bring, tell us who you are and why you're ready to talk. Bo?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have a camera, sorry, so that's going to be okay?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us why you're talking to us and then we'll start the buck when you get done with that.
Okay, my name is Bo Price. I'm the president of the Board of Commissioners for the Dumbek Lane Domestic Water Supply District, which sits outside North Albany, between Albany and North Albany area and Adair Independence Highway. We're about 115 customers, water customers. Is that all you need?
Yep.
Okay. So, okay, so I thought I would come and address, I wrote a letter to the City Council and the Benton County Board of Supervisors or Commissioners. Couple of months ago, in March, we were on your agenda for a work council or work session. And we were kind of believing as a board that this would be taken care of by now. It's been really slow going and the concern that I have, what we're trying to do is get, have Benton County merge us into, and annex us into the North Albany County Service District, which is managed by the City of Albany. And so we have prepared ourselves and our system to be one where we could flow right in. The only thing that Albany would have to do to really start managing us fully is do the billing and collections for our district because right now we already have contract with City of Albany to do all the maintenance operations, installs, read our meters. We're compatible with City of Albany's system and meter reading and all that. And I'm very concerned and I just wanted to bring it up to the City Council and the Benton County Board of Commissioners that as of July- That as of July one, we will no longer have a board. And we did not want to drop this like a bombshell on anybody and have a judge somewhere say, okay, Benton County, now you gotta take this over boom. And and then have everyone scrambling. So we've been trying to. Very methodically with an engineer helping us, working with both entities. To try to get. Everything need to be done and all the details worked out and all that kind of stuff. And we're a month and a half away and on July first, we we losing another commissioner. So we'll be down to two out of five seats. And I personally have tried to go out and recruit, we all have, and nobody wants to be on our board. So we've come to this point and I'm asking the council to basically. You know. See what you can do to move a little quicker and the public works has been working with our engineering and whatever takes, I'm willing to put in my time. Help, answer questions, whatever, work with your public works people, whatever. To get this done sooner so that by, you know, by the end of June, we could be annexed. And I'm not sure all the details that need to happen, but. A lot of it, it's on both county and city. I guess that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. But we'll have questions, I'm sure during Business from the Council, you can log back in or stay on. I'm sure the councils will have questions at that time, if you don't mind hanging out for a little bit.
Okay.
But thank you very much. So adoption of a resolution, revote of the CDCDBG action plan. And Caitlin, I do have a script to read, so Anne, would you like to speak first or don't you just go ahead and read the script?
Mayor, I think Anne was not planning on speaking, she has no.
Okay, that's fine. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the script that she provided for me, so thank you very much, Anne. Staff has asked that we revoke to adopt the city's two thousand twenty one action plan for CDCDBG programs. As a vote was not clear, apparently on Zoom, some of the votes were missed, and so we want to make sure that we get it right this time. So we're going to do a roll call vote. Counselor Bartholomew.
I need to recuse myself from voting on this item.
Okay. So let's call the, let's go back to the resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Forgive me, I. Could I could I get just a real quick review on this? I. Have had a lot of, I just, I I need a review before I vote. I I I'm not sure entirely clear on on the resolution, if you would be so kind.
So Anne, would you speak to that?
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor and Counselors. So last council meeting, April twenty eighth, you adopted a resolution or you passed a resolution that adopted the two thousand twenty one. Action plan, which basically spells out how the city proposes to spend community development block grant funds in the two thousand twenty one program year. And we just wanted to clarify the vote on that, so we're just asking you to revote on that. I did a staff report last time, but these are federal funds that come to the city to primarily benefit low and moderate income residents.
Thank you.
Can answer more questions if needed.
And it was passed last time, I believe, six to nothing, correct?
So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for asking the question, Counselor Novak. So is there, was there a motion?
For the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
There's a second. So we're into a roll call vote, so we're clear on this. Can Allison, can you please do a roll call?
Answer. Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Novak.
Yes.
Counselor Bartholomew is recused. Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
So motion passed.
We had six votes, or I'm sorry, five votes for, yes.
Five zero, Pat, the motion is, resolution is passed, so adopt the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, this is Bessie, and I apologize, I should have read the whole res- the resolution title and I and I just went back to old habits, so I'm really sorry.
Okay, we'll just, we'll get it going forward, okay? Thank you. Self reporting, I like it. Next one is a ward of a contract, radio dispatch console system. Chief Harner will be back talking with us.
Sure, uh, you have the paperwork in front of you. Our radio system here at the Police Department is thirteen years old. They chose not to replace it when the new building was built because it still had some life in it. But we are rapidly running out of time with that system. Technical support and service for the current system ends December thirty first, two thousand twenty one. It is already failing, we've had the vendor out here a number of times and it's becoming unreliable. And our police radios obviously are significant to our safety and efficiency. We set aside two hundred thousand dollars in equipment replacement for this project. And the proposed installation cost, it went out to RFP. We already have the support maintenance fees built into the twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three biennium budget. Day wireless already supports our current system, so this should be a seamless transition through RFP process, we decided to go with day wireless.
Any questions, counsel? Counselor Novak, do you have your hand up?
Oh, forgive me, I forgot to put it back down. Where's my? Thank you for the reminder.
Counsel, thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I got it. Um, first of all, Chief, thank you for bringing this to us way ahead of time instead of waiting for until November to ask us to do it for December. And then also, I just wanted to make one comment. Now, we're going with day wireless, looks like they had all the high scores except for experience and qualifications. So I was just wondering. If, I mean, I'm sure you've dotted your i's and crossed your t's, but. Was it just that they they were better in their present presentation?
Well, they actually, since they already work on our systems.
Okay.
Just the the ability to get us up and running. Is a big factor here, they already knew how our system is set up and they're familiar with the the regional radio network. And I know that Sean Park's gonna weigh in here too, he said on that. But both vendors came in under our expected budget, but day wireless is certainly are preferred just because we have a good documented history with that company. And I'll let Sean.
That sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Counselor Johnson, let me have, Counselor Kupczynski, you're next, but can I have Sean Park jumping real quick and add something to that? Are you okay with that, Counselor? Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, counselors. Um, yeah, I wanted to add a little bit to Marcia's comments there. There were two. Two vendors that made it through the initial process, the the vetting. And they go through a comprehensive scoring analysis that the the IT and Albany Police Department team completed. And while they they may have scored a little bit lower on that one element. They scored higher in others that were that classified as more important. And we also have that experience with that particular vendor already under our belt. So it was a very comprehensive review that we're really happy with. And we're happy to tear those apart and discuss with those with you anytime you would like, they're actually quite interesting.
I'll bet, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Counselor Kupczynski.
Well, yes, just historically, for many years now, we've had a on public works type bids. We've had a printout showing who the vendors were that bid and what their costs were. So I understand that both of these bids came in lower than your estimate. I would still like to know what was the, was there a material difference? How much was it, even though it's still under the budgeted budgeted amount, because we're trying to nominally keep track of some costs.
I am, let me see if I have it here, if not, I'll get back to you on it, but we we do have a breakdown of each one. But I don't know, Sean, if you have it, anything in front of you, but we we do have some breakdowns of it. But the, I believe that the only one I have in front of me is going to be the day wireless one.
Counselor. Thank you, Chief, Sean has his hand up again, go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, Chief, the 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 day wireless proposal came in, if memory serves, I don't have the the responses in front of me, I apologize. We're approximately forty thousand dollars under the estimated two hundred thousand dollar initial range. And the the competing bid was about twenty eight thousand dollars higher than that. So day wireless did end up winning that portion of the scoring based on their cost proposal.
Thank you, Sean. Counselors, any more questions? I think Counselor Kupczynski, he already went. Any other counselors have any questions or concerns or would like to address it? So do I have a motion to accept accept the resolution?
I would move that we award the contract for the police radio dispatch console system to day wireless.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. So it looks like the motion passes six to nothing. Next up is. Adoption of the consent calendar, approve the minutes.
Move to approve the adoption of the consent calendar and minutes.
Second.
Seconded.
Most of you have a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. So motion passes six to nothing. Next on the agenda, item is staff reports, reclassification of recreation specialists to recreation coordinator, Director Kim LaDain.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, thanks for letting me present tonight. I am here to request authorization to reclassify one FTE, a recreation specialist to a recreation coordinator. The staff member approached HR to see if they could get a classification study. And it was determined that they were working outside of their their current classification. I apologize, as my wind chimes are loud, if they're distracting you, tug on your ear. Uh, so it was reviewed and determined by HR that yes, in fact, they should be reclassified. The change to our our budget, it'll be about sixteen hundred dollars each fiscal year. And we believe that it is a good investment and the right thing to do so that we're keeping our staff compensated appropriately. Are there any questions?
Also. Any questions, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Kupczynski.
Kim, is this amount, it's a budget impact is for sixteen hundred twenty seven, you know, small amount, but is that, would that be included in the upcoming budget then per se?
We, because the request had come in before. Before the budget was submitted, we assumed, I guess you would say burst, best case, worst case scenario, best case staff, worst case budget. Best case really with with all of us. But um, and so, yes, this is incorporated into the next year's fiscal year, but because it's going back retroactive to March first, we needed to bring it to council. To bring it to your attention to make sure that we can make it retroactive. Excellent question.
Any other comments or question? Your motion?
I would move to approve the reclassification of the recreation specialist to recreation coordinator in Parks and Recreation.
Second. We have a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Did I hear six? I think I heard six. Those opposed, same sign.
I'm just curious as to why it's retroactive when the when we're. The budget is like we have a five million dollar shortfall, I don't want to deny anyone anything, I'm just curious as to why does it need to be retroactive to March?
Sure, it's part of our ASME union contract that if a classification study comes up, then it is. If they've continued to do the work, it it goes back to when their original request came up.
Thanks for the explanation.
You're welcome.
So did you vote in affirmative, say yes, Counselor Novak?
Yes.
Okay, so there was no abstent, no abstentions or no votes, so motion passes. Congratulations, your your worker and your employee, and thanks for presenting today.
No problem, enjoy your evening.
Okay, next on the agenda. Is city services fee rate direction. Peter, City Manager Peter Schrotson on page sixty five and sixty six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and other than what you have in your packet, we do not have a presentation for you. You'll recall that we had a discussion on Monday evening about selecting a base rate. And you through, all of you through some thumbs up and head nods indicated you were in general agreement that nine dollars would be an appropriate. Rate on which to build the rest of the fee structure. So tonight, if that's still your decision, we'd ask for a vote to document that. And of course, Sean and Gina and I are ready to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question.
Let's go ahead, Counselor Novak.
The other day when we were discussing this. Counselor Bartholomew asked if we could hold off on something until. Until we knew how many people had been impacted by the effects of the last fourteen months, how many new people we have in the poverty category. And you said we can't, and I'm curious as to why we can't do that. If we can do other things retroactively, why can we not hold off for just a few months for people who are in dire straits? I'd like to know why that is.
And Counselor Novak, I I don't think I said we can't, in fact, I'm pretty sure we can, you can, you can. With respect to this, you can pretty much choose to do it effective, you know, so that so that it comes in for the July first date for the for the next biennium. Or you can choose to delay it till the following biennium. The 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 fact is, or the, you know, the the question you have to ask yourself is, do you, how do you feel about the service levels effective July first and going forward? So certainly, you know, we are working quickly to try to revise the low income assistance program. So that it will take into account all low income people in the city and across all utilities. The the first or the most immediate and the quickest step we can do is apply the same existing, already existing low income assistance program. To the city services fee. But you know, the the question about who or how many people fall into certain categories is certainly something that that you can ask to wait for that. Or you can. Yeah, yeah, it's up, it's essentially up to the council.
Counselor Smith, do you have a comment or question?
I do, I understood that this was coming back at the second meeting in May for a decision. Or a definitive decision is this. Discussion tonight directed to building the, building a car and deciding the horsepower.
Yes, yes, exactly, that's a.
Okay.
It's just documenting the the discussion that we had on Monday. The, what you are referring to is the ordinance and resolution that would actually implement will come back in in on the twenty fourth and the twenty sixth. And that, and that is the final decision, this is the penultimate.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Olson, worse than Counselor Johnson.
Well, yes. I I had a telephone call where a person left a message. And they wanted to discuss with me the situation. And so I was all prepared to present the arguments about our dwindling income. And our escalating costs. And so I called her back. And she was wondering why she had to pay a sewer bill, seeing as how she had a septic tank in North Albany. So she caught me flat footed and. I couldn't really remember the good reasons we had for charging people in North Albany. For sewer when they really don't use our sewer. But I remember our discussion and we had, we had a good discussion about that and we. And we ended up on a cheerful note. And so I didn't have to explain exactly why we needed more income. So I was pleased.
Mayor, if I may address, Counselor Olson, I don't know, Chris Bailey is with us, she could address if that's a question you have about.
No, I don't, no, no.
And and as far as, just, just for the sake of truth and. And as far as, just, just for the sake of truth and advertising, you mentioned dwindling revenues. And revenues are not dwindling. They're, they're not at all dwindling. You know, we are suffering from a pandemic. But what, remember what we're talking about is a systemic imbalance. And it's more as a result of the costs going up than revenues dwindling, so.
Well, I disagree with that. You know, we're stuck with a three percent escalation in the property tax we can, we can levy and our costs are going up at a rate of five percent. And so we, relative to the value of our property's value, we have dwindling our revenue because of that. And we also have dwindling revenue because the state continues to load more and more costs onto us that I think they ought to bear. So here again, I think we have dwindling revenue, dwindling usable revenue. And most people agree with that when I explain that to them.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Any other counselor have any comments or questions?
I did, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Counselor Johnson first.
I had someone ask me and I, and I'm sure I knew the answer, but when it says fee rate, single family residential base. Now, we, the fee for a, say, my home, it's going to be a nine dollar flat rate. Is that correct? I want to make sure that when they say base rate, that it doesn't mean that there's more added to it. That's the question that I was asked. And I thought, I thought I knew the answer and I thought, I better ask.
No, your impression is correct.
Okay, very good. Good, right answer. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Bartholomew.
So with this fee schedule, this would be able to, my question is, this would, would take away all of the cuts that are being made across the board and allow each of the different agencies to remain at the current level. Is that correct?
Yes, you know, we're aiming at that, but you can appreciate that the situation changes daily, right? So we get, we're especially now in the sense that we're getting assistance from different quarters. So what this, what it's aimed at doing is providing department heads, department directors with those resources back to get, to keep them roughly. They're not going to be able to increase service levels certainly, because it's, it's won't provide enough to, you know, to, to obtain new capabilities in any department. But it should get us very close to where we are now and allow us to keep, keep providing close to what we're providing today.
And, and so with that, just looking at the, the budget, the, the gap was five million approximately. And so, you know, there's an eight dollar, a nine dollar and a ten dollar increments. And it looks like the eight dollar is the closest to the five million gap in the biennium. And then nine dollar would give us a little cushion of, of more than half, half a million.
But you also have to, to remember the cost of administering the program, which is
Okay.
Estimated about between two and three hundred thousand.
Thank you so much.
Each year, Peter? Thank you, Counselor. Is that each year?
Yes, two hundred. Well, let me confirm with Sean. Let me get Sean Park to confirm that cost.
Because it goes across all utilities, right? So it's.
Well, it's one point, if I recall correctly, it's one point two million across all utilities per year. So if you were to divide that before, it's, it's about three hundred thousand. And Sean, can you confirm that?
Yes, I can. Thank you. The, and we're looking at that, that administrative overhead of running the program of being an annual fee between the estimated current conversations is between two and three hundred thousand annual. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think that's mine. Counselor Bartholomew, you got anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Novak.
Thanks. I'm still at a loss to understand how we can be presented with a budget that has a difference of five million dollars and be told that it's balanced. And because of that difference, we need this fee. I, I, I'm lost at that. I, and I'm, I'm, I'm just so stricken and torn because I believe in the need for public safety. I don't want to cut public safety, but I don't understand how, you know, why does it have to cost two, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars a year to run a program? I don't know. I'm just, I have people who are reaching out to me saying, please don't vote for that fee. Please don't vote for that fee. And then I have other people saying, please don't defund our police. Well, I don't want to defund our police. I don't want to defund our firefighters. I just don't understand how this budget is considered balanced when it's got a five million dollar gap. And the solution to the gap is to create more fees for people who may not be able to, someone who's, who's, you know, running the program can afford fees, but already people have told me, and I look at my own bills and yes, there's this fee and there's this and there's this, there's all these other charges besides your base rate and your usage, and then there's everything else. And we're talking about how this is going to impact individual households. And we've discussed to a degree also businesses. And yes, I remember restaurants have one inch pipes, but I, I just, there are some things that I'm struggling with and I, I'm just, I guess, going to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Kupczynski, you have your hand up.
I think our mayor had an answer for that. I mean, our manager.
So, so Counsel, let's do that. Counselor Kupczynski, let's get a response from the city manager and we'll come to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And Counselor Novak, I just wanted to clarify what the word balanced means as an adjective here. It just means that we're not running a deficit. So we can't, unlike the federal government, we can't run a deficit. We, you know, we, we have to have it, we have to have the budget balanced. So what we get in revenues has to equal what we put out in expenditures. We can't go in the red. We can't go negative. And that's, that's what balanced means in that regard. It doesn't mean that we're, we're not providing fewer services than we provided last year. It just means that on the plus side equals the negative side. Therefore, it's balanced.
Counselor Novak, your hand is still up. Counselor Kupczynski, you were not.
I was going to give a slightly different analogy in that it's, it's balanced because it actually shows the cuts that are being proposed. And that is that gap. So if we do not, if we do nothing, then those cuts will be made across the board. So the opportunity that we have is to provide mitigation with the services fee. And it's a, hopefully it's a short term gap and we can do something like, AKA, the city manager brought up to us what Philomath has done. I mean, that would be an ideal situation. I have no reason to believe that we don't have the political foresight to do something like that down the road also. But it is balanced because right now the proposed budget is, is, the approved budget actually is the one that shows all the cuts and has that five million, five million plus dollar gap in it. So here we are.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
I was just going to say that I agree with what Counselor Kupczynski said. A good way for people to see what those cuts are without waiting through five hundred and ninety-two pages of the budget document is to look at our webpage, which the pages that explain the city services fee concept, all of those cuts are outlined on those pages.
So thank you very much, Counselor Smith. One of the things that Peter provided me with today when I met with him is basically those graphs and bar charts that show the budget and where money goes. And I had the first opportunity to show, share those with people today. And a lot of the people there were like, okay, now it makes sense. Because they tried to read a budget document and there's page after page after page after page and line item, line item. And that, those graphs are very visual and you can explain and provide information to people in a visual way. And then the, then the light will come on and say, okay, that makes sense. Because a lot of folks didn't realize there's only so much to the pie in our section of that pie, because you have gaps and you have Lynn County. And then our thirty-seven cents of every dollar in taxes, people didn't realize it was that low. And so it was, it was eye opening for a lot of folks today. So I, I think that those slides are, I think everyone should have a copy of those slides. So that's all I got. Anybody else have anything? So Counsel, what would you like to do with this?
I would like to move forward with the nine dollar fee as outlined. I don't know how you want to structure the recommendation. We're not doing a resolution ordinance, but I would recommend that we go through with the proposal as it's been outlined on the document that we have today.
So we're going to build a car. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Okay, I'm going to need a roll call vote. I didn't see, I didn't hear enough voices. Allison, could you please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Find my pencil. Okay. Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Novak.
You're muted.
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's six, that's six votes.
Yes, it is.
Motion passes. And let's go back to the agenda. So next from this business from the council, and on my screen, Counselor Novak is first.
Mayor, were you going to have Mr. Emmons comment again about the Dunback?
Oh, yes. Mr. Emmons, who's that? Mr. Price, you mean?
No, our city engineer.
Oh, I didn't see him down there. So yes, let's go ahead and deal with that now. Mr. Emmons, please go ahead and speak up, please. Is he there?
I think. Yeah, yes, I, I am here.
So you have the floor, sir. We're talking about Dunback.
Okay. So we have been working with, with Dunback Water District. We have been in touch with their, with the engineer they have hired. And we are moving forward with developing a fee structure or a rate structure to kind of to move forward with incorporating them into, into the city of Albany. So as part of the North Albany County Service District. So that is, that work is, is, is happening. Unfortunately, it's a rather slow process getting, getting that work done. So our goal is to, to get that done and make that happen before July first. But there are quite a bit of details to, to work through and we're still kind of developing what those details are.
Good. Thank you very much. Are you working, so both price, Mr. Price recommended, said earlier he'd be available to answer any questions. So please stay in touch with his engineer and with him and let's try to get this done so they're not left out in the lurch.
For sure.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming up tonight. I appreciate it. So Peter Scholzen, please, your hands up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You know, Mr. Price has, and I have talked about this, this issue before, and he certainly has borne quite a load in trying to keep his board going. But I have to point out to the council that, you know, this, this district is outside the city limits and it's outside the urban growth boundary. It will not become part of the city of Albany unless the urban growth boundary is expanded. And the responsibility for managing the district and constituting the board for the district belongs among the, the people who are part of that district. It's not the city of Albany's responsibility. And we have to bear that in mind. And as Mr. Emmons pointed out, there are details that have to be worked out. If it's not possible to, to make this happen before July first, and it's highly likely that it won't be possible, that's, that's unfortunate for the district, but that is not a crisis that is of our making. So again, I want to assure you that the county commission in Benton County, the county staff, our staff, we're all working as quickly as we can to try to, to make something happen for the Dunback Water District. But again, there are quite a few details and it's not exactly something that can be done quickly.
Thank you very much, Peter. Counselor Olson.
Could that be considered a low income area? Are they having trouble financially doing this stuff?
No, in fact, Mr. Price would confirm probably that they do, they're quite, their reserves and the assets that they have are substantial. So, and I would not say it's a low income district.
Well, that was my, my inclination. And I'm wondering if they can hire some help to get stuff going, get it done.
So again, they, they have, they have hired help and they're working on it. At the one July deadline is simply something that the significance of that date is that their board will go below a quorum. And nobody knows what that means. As far as I know, we haven't been able to determine, you know, I'm sure the sun still comes up and the, the, the health, the quality of the water that they still receive will be just as good as it was the day before. And they'll continue to be billed for the services that they receive. But again, like I said, there are some pretty substantial legal issues that have to be addressed in order to take this on.
I'll bet if you shut the water off for a week, you might get some volunteers to be on the board.
And it looks like Mr. Price has his hand up, Mayor.
So Mr. Price, go ahead, please.
I would just like to add that what Peter said is true as far as some of the issues. The problem with it is that the July first one, life will go on. But if we don't have a board, Albany's not going to get paid because nobody's going to approve payment. So that's the issue. We buy water. We have maintenance issues, things like that. But the biggest thing is we need to be able to continue water. And if you want to, if Albany wants to continue giving water without getting paid, that would be great, although I don't think that's wise. I don't think that you want to do that, which is why it's, to me, it's a very serious issue because we won't be able to pay our bills without a board to vote and approve payment of bills. So that's the, that's the big issue.
Thank you, Beau.
Okay.
So, so I'm sure there will be further discussion on this topic. Next on the agenda items will be those from the council. And Counselor Novak, you're still first.
All right. I don't really have anything, but I'm just wondering in regard to what Mr. Price had said last, if, if he has specifically gone to some, the individuals in that district and put forth to them what he just said to us, that if, if we can't pay our bills, then we won't get water. Like, we need people on this board to make sure that we can pay our bill. I don't know even Mr. Price, if you're still there, but I, I, that would be very convincing to me were I in that district. I would, I would sign right up if someone said we're going to lose our ability to have water if we don't get six people or whatever it is that you need to have your quorum. I, I will be praying for you in this situation because I think that's, that can be very serious. You know, initially, the sun will rise and you'll have water. But as you say, if it's a matter of not being able to pay the bill, then for sure you will not have it at some point. So I would just encourage you to say it like you said it to us. And I pray things work out.
Beau?
Thank you.
To confirm, yes, I, I have personally gone and talked to people all through and we put it in our newsletter. And yes, we've, we've, we begged and pleaded and people say, well, you know, I just don't have time. And as far as it, if we don't have, I, I don't believe that the state of Oregon Public Health Department or whatever department manages it would let us a hundred people go without water. They would require somebody to step in and take it over, which is why I'm saying that we've always looked at the fact that if this doesn't happen and we don't have a board, the judge, some judge is going to appoint Benton County probably because we're in Benton County to say, take care of this issue. And then Benton County is going to come to you guys and say, hey, we need you to also take care of these new customers that we have in our district. And you're doing it all anyway. So there's no difference. And you're doing it all anyway. So there's no difference except the fact that to do some billing and have a different agreement with Benton County versus with two of them with, one with Benton County and one with, um, Dunbeck. So that's what we're trying to avoid is to have some judge step in because of a public health crisis, say, make it happen now.
Yeah.
That's, that's the key thing.
All right, thank you, Bo. The next on my screen is Counselor Smith.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I had two items this evening. One was to acknowledge the letter to the editor that Counselor Novak, uh, wrote to, it was in today's Democrat Herald. Very nicely put and a, a good advertisement for folks to contact their counselors if they have concerns and questions. And, and keep up with what we're doing. So thank you, Counselor Novak, for doing that.
Indeed.
Yes.
My pleasure.
Other item I had was, uh, uh, request from a constituent who had contacted myself, um, Counselor Johnson and Mayor Johnson regarding, um, a neighbor feeding wild ducks. The wild ducks are creating a problem for the complainant. They are, um, invading his property, um, leaving calling cards, um, everywhere and creating a lot of noise. And he was also concerned that, that they may be attracting rats. I responded to him with the information that I, um, always use for, for people who have rat problems. And just wanted to use this as another opportunity, um, to remind people that ducks, wild ducks should, don't feed wild ducks. They are wild ducks. They're migratory waterfowl. They're not supposed to be here year-round. They're supposed to survive by their own wits and not by bags of bread. It, it, they cause problems. They are, they shouldn't be in your yard, um, feeding wa- wildlife in general. Um, turkeys, for example, we all remember the West Albany turkeys. People, some people feed nutria. Don't do it, please.
Chinese herb, yeah. I agree with you.
So just, I wanted to throw that out there.
Next up is, thank you very much, Robert, for that.
You're welcome.
Nothing.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Um, I was, uh, I had the conversation with, uh, Gabe Shepherd about, uh, who's a counselor in, uh, Corvallis about a bi- bias response initiative. And I think that, uh, we should could consider that and look into that and be part of that conversation as a, as a city council. Because it's wanting to facilitate regional conversations of how to respond to non-criminal, um.
Everybody's not moving. It was me.
Sorry?
Oh, it was me. My internet froze. Sorry about that. Um, I missed part of what you said. I think I froze when you were talking.
Okay. Um, I was approached by Gabe Shepherd of the Corvallis City Council. And he shared with me about, uh, the funding that Corvallis is, is creating to engage in a bias response initiative, which means a community conversation about how to respond to non-criminal bias, uh, incidents. And I, I see that, that that would be a good idea for the council to become part of or members of our community to become part of that. And it looks like Peter has a response to that.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yes, I just wanted to remind council, we, we talked, uh, very briefly about this a while ago. The city of Corvallis has offered to, uh, provide seed money, if you will, to, uh, start a program like this under the auspices of the COG, the Council of Governments. So by membership in the COG, you are already, uh, participating in a way. And I, I, I don't want to put words in Counselor Bartholomew's mouth, but I think she's just looking for, for you to, one, know about it and two, be supportive of the effort. So.
Thank you, Peter. And, um, next up is Counselor.
Uh, could I ask a bit about bias and, and just what that amounts to?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not too familiar with the program. So, uh, they want to talk about bias? Is that racial bias or income bias or what, what, what all are they thinking about?
Um, my belief is that it is concerning racial and other, uh, protected class persons, bias against those persons in the community. That is not necessarily rising to the level of criminality.
So is, does this involve police response or maybe having somebody else respond for various, for some kinds of problems? I'd be in favor of that, but.
That's, that's correct, Counselor Olson. It's, uh, it's having, it's developing a response that's outside, could possibly be and probably is outside the police, uh, realm. And I would.
I, I would, I would be glad to, uh, uh, hear about that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, a lot of hands went up. So we're, we're still during Counselor Bartholomew's time. So Counselor Kupczynski, you had a question or comment?
Yes. Um, my, my understanding is that this would potentially be a regional collaboration, uh, process. Uh, and it might be something that'd be worthwhile to be brought forward to like a work session. Uh, so it's gonna be discussed a little bit easier. Uh, and then we could do something with it one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Counselor Kupczynski. Chief Harnett had her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, give some information to the council and to Counselor Olson. Uh, there is, uh, required actions on behalf, uh, of the police department for, uh, bias-related crimes and bias-related incidents. Incidents are, are those type of hate speech type of issues where a crime has not occurred, but there's bias at play. We are required to document it and refer people to the, uh, Oregon Department of Justice for some resources. Uh, and one of the things that we've done, uh, with some of these incidents have occurred over the last year is we've created a bias response liaison officer, Sergeant Quarter, who, uh, does an intake on all the incidents, crimes and not crimes to make sure that they're, uh, the people involved have the proper resources. And that we do all of our proper reporting to the state of, uh, Oregon. We're required to report our incidents to the state of Oregon. So that's, there is some responsibility in the ORS and it, it varies based on your, um, what part of government you work in.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't think there would be a need for the police department to respond to that kind of thing. And, um, I'm reminded of what, um, um, ex-first lady, um, uh, Obama, uh, commented on, I think it was last night or maybe the night before, about, uh, she, among other people of color, are very hesitant or, or worried about their kids getting driver's license for fear that they may be stopped. And, um, what shall I say? Mistreated, I guess, is a, a fairly neutral term to use. So, um, I, I would think that somebody else ought to respond to, um, uh, the comments that we're talking about here. But I think that's a future discussion and I'd be glad to, I, I would be glad to have that.
Right, thank you. Uh, so Counselor Bartholomew, is that it for you?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
So who else? Um, cause my screen moved around when Marilyn stepped out. So Marilyn, have you gone already? So Counselor Smith and then Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I had a, I had an internet failure, so I was, uh, blacked out for a while. So I missed what Chief Harden said, but I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Smith?
I already said what I was gonna say. I apologize for that. Bessie and I must have had the same power bump.
You guys are in more than three. Counselor Olson has his hand up again. Thank you, Mr. Counselor Smith.
Thanks.
So was there, uh, somebody else on, on the list besides me for comment?
No, right now, that's it.
Okay. Well, I wanted to, uh, respond to Marilyn's, uh, uh, asking us not to feed ducks. And, uh, ducks have been fed along my canal the full fifty-some years that I've been here. And, um, uh, neighbors feed them. I'm afraid I'm guilty. Uh, we, we've got a little juvenile duck and I'm hopefully, uh, um, uh, we can raise to adulthood and I'm feeding him a little bit. But when we first moved here, somebody had introduced, um, the domestic white ducks to the canal. And, um, white ducks have the ability to multiply at a tremendous rate and over a long period of the summer. And they don't fly. And the nice thing about wild ducks is they'll fly off someplace else, perhaps to, uh, Maryland's neighborhood. Uh, but, um, and one time my daughter counted a hundred and twenty-five ducks in our yard. But, uh, fortunately, um, um, wild males have invaded the canal and gradually thinned out the, uh, white domesticated ducks. And we now have strictly flying ducks once they get old enough to, uh, get their wing feathers. And, um, I, I hope the, uh, the people don't, uh, crack down on the feeding of ducks here in, in downtown along the Eighth Street Canal because, um, uh, I and the neighbors enjoy them and, uh, and, uh, and they're not a problem here. And I'm wondering, Marilyn, are those muskabye ducks that there be, are being fed in your, in your, uh, neighborhood? Cause they are real pests. They, they, uh, poop crap all over every place, but the domestic ducks, usually they're not much of a problem.
Said, I don't know what these ducks are, Counselor Olson. They, um, this is on the other side of the freeway over off of Clover Ridge Road. Um, so not in my neighborhood. We have, I'm right on the canal and we have mallards on, in, in behind our house, along with the occasional possum and nutria. And sometimes herons. And we don't mind them, but we don't feed them either. They're, they're able to fend for themselves and, um, it's, it's, this is a problem for this particular constituent because his neighbor is feeding them. It's a tight-knit neighborhood, or I mean, a tightly packed neighborhood with fairly small lots. Uh, I don't know where the water source is that these, uh, creatures should be going to, but they're going to the, the neighbor's yard instead. And, and it, and they might be the muskabye ducks because apparently they are, have regular, um, well, they're causing a mess.
Okay.
Okay.
We need to bring us some vegan.
Yeah, yeah. We, we've got a pair of raccoons that are, uh, uh, quite tame in our neighborhood and they're, and they really love cat food. So, um, I'm.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you, Counselor Smith, Counselor Olson. Um, I, is everyone got a chance to speak? Your best counsel, Johnson, you spoke? You had nothing, right?
No, I didn't.
Um, I think that's, I'm the last one. Uh, I just had a couple of things. One, I started, um, um, meet, meet the mayor, uh, discussions today and I'll be doing a series of those. A lot of folks don't know who I am and have spoken with me. So, uh, I will post it on my Facebook and people can join the conversation. Typically do it outside so we can sort of physical distance and keep everyone safe. But, um, small groups, you know, five to ten people, we can just sit out and talk in the sun and while we can, because when, when that stops, it stops. Hard stop. And so, uh, that's happening. And then I had a phone call from a a, a lady today, uh, quite upset about a flyer that was being distributed at Hazelwood Park. And I'm quite disturbed by what I saw on the flyer. And so, uh, I, I would, I'd hope that they would cease that practice of, because I mean, there's rumors going around everywhere that the park has been sold in a secret bid. The city is transparent. There's no secret bids. There's no secret ballots. There's, everything we do as a city council is public. It's on the screen. It's in front of you in the minutes. And so whoever started that rumor, please stop and just cease and desist that. That makes no sense and it's scaring people. So, and for me, that's pretty much it. Uh, city manager moment, uh.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I add on to what you just said about Hazelwood Park? Um, we were, we were up for a drive the other day and we went by there because I wanted to see what was, what they're talking about. And there's still a sign up there saying that if you have, if you have questions about, see, if you have this questions about this dog park, call so-and-so, Gary or something. I mean, I don't think it's a dog park. And I just wondered, um, if, you know, what that is about because, uh, I, it's not a dog park. It's not, it's just a park. And I don't know who this Gary guy is. So.
Well, the flyer, the flyer that was sent to me has my phone number on it. Everybody on the, phone number on it. And, uh, this is, this is getting out of hand. So I'd greatly appreciate if a person would stop doing that. Until, until that land is actually sold or made to put, there's bids on it. I don't know what the process, city manager's working on that part of it. Or the, or the director of parks is working on that. I wish it would just cease. And, um, other than that, city manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have for you all is just to let you know that tomorrow morning we'll be hosting the Chamber of Commerce greeters, uh, virtually here at City Hall. So that'll be at, at eight-thirty tomorrow morning. And, uh, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
With that, our next meeting is Monday, May twenty-fourth, the twenty-twenty-one at four P M. There's a work session. And our city, next city council meeting is Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one at six P M. Is our regular meeting. And with that, I'll call for the chairman of the meeting. Everyone have a good evening and enjoy your dinner and family.
Thank you.
Good night.